The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first agenda item is to, our recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented. So moved Jill with the first.
Second.
Charles with the second. I don't believe there'll be any discussion, so we can vote. Has anyone's come up? Nope. Okay. Just sit here with myself. We'll give a second. If not, I'll just call the roll. Okay. Let's do it. There we go. There we go. Ooh, that's exciting. Thank you for your help, Kathy. Our next agenda item is public comments to address agenda items. We have no speakers, so we will move on to our consent agenda, which is Agenda Item 3.0. I, my computer is being slow right now, so give me just a second. Does anybody else having trouble with their computer loading? Okay, there we go. All right, our, our Agenda Items 3.01 through 5.01, the recommended action is that the board approve the consent Agenda Items 3.01 through 5.01 as presented.
So moved.
Charles, thank you.
Second.
Jerry with the second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we are ready to vote. There are no informational reports, so that will take us to Agenda Item 7, collective bargaining agreements, and Penny is going to come to the podium to go over those.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity this evening to present for you our five collective bargaining agreements for your consideration. Before we do that, I want to say thank you to the, each of the five units, and Ms. Sarah Schofield's with us this evening. She's the president of NEA. Sarah, her teams of leaders in each of those units, as well as the Teamsters, worked with us during the spring to prepare what you have before you this evening, and each of those units have ratified those agreements, but I want to thank them for being patient, working with us through some very difficult times as they were all trying to adapt to a new normal, whether that be working from home or performing different services here in district. They committed the time to meet with us and, and to talk through various provisions and to reach the agreements that you have. So I thank them publicly for their efforts and their commitment. It's, it's certainly evident in the conversations that we had, as well as in their work each and every day, that they are committed to our students, to our staff, and to the families of this district, and so publicly thanking them for their efforts and their support. We don't always agree, but we, we all do agree to the, the primary point, and that is serving kids, and that's, we all then can, can come together around that best interest of the students, and so tremendous work that they do. The five agreements that you have before you this evening, the substantive provisions are financial in nature. Each of those five agreements contain the same financial terms, and that is that we operate the salary schedule for each of those units, and there is a provision for a 1% cost of living increase, provided certain financial conditions are met, based primarily on the state fully funding the formula, Prop C funding, and some other provisions relative to finances. And so with that, other changes were, were minor in nature, some typographical changes, but we would ask that you consider approving those five collective bargaining agreements, as well as the two side letters for the teacher's agreement relative to launch and explore. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Penny at this time? We will vote individually, as you see on board docs, for each of those agreements.
So you need a separate motion for each one?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the first motion. I just was curious if there were any general questions under collective bargaining for Penny at this time. Okay, all right. We'll start with Agenda Item 7.01. The recommended action is that the board approve the superintendent or designee to sign the agreement and attachments with the National Education Association as presented. So moved Jill.
Second.
Denise with the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we can vote. Next Agenda Item 7.02. The recommended action is that the board approve the superintendent or designee to sign the agreement and attachments with the National Education Association as presented, and as you note on the subject, this one is for the nurses. Jerry with the first.
Second.
Charles with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we can vote. Next Agenda Item 7.03 for the SESP group. The recommended action is that the board approve the superintendent or designee to sign the agreement and attachments with the National Education Association as presented. Denise?
Second.
Jill with the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we can vote. Next Agenda Item 7.04 with the clerical group. The recommended action is that the board approve the superintendent or designee to sign the agreement and attachments with the National Education Association as presented.
So moved.
Charles?
Second.
Sharita with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we can vote. The next Agenda Item 7.05 is with the Teamsters Local Union Number 245. The recommended action is that the board approve the superintendent or designee to sign the agreement with the Teamsters Local Union Number 245 as presented. Charles with the first.
Second.
Denise with the second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we can vote. Thank you Penny for working with those individual groups and presenting that to us. Up next, our next Agenda Item is 8.01, the Treasurer's Report, with Carol making her presentation.
Yes, good evening. So this is that interesting time of year when we're at the end of the fiscal year, that will end on June 30, yet we're not quite there. So the information that's presented for you for consideration of approval represents data through June 16, so we will see changes continue. We have included within the Items of Interest Report some other information that might be beneficial as you receive this this evening, a reminder that the annual Secretary of the Board Report is due August 15, and that will truly represent our final financials for the fiscal year, and we do provide that to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education following your approval, that occurs in conjunction with the presentation of the audit by the independent auditor to you. And the audit field work is already scheduled for the period October 1, and will conclude by the end of October, so likely we will have that audit report recommendation by November. So again, we are in two fiscal years for a period of time, and then before we know it, we'll start the new budget year in January. So that's how this cycle works. We do have some amendments for your consideration this evening, minimal changes in the big scheme of the total operating budget and total budget. Much of this is to align launch expenditures and revenue, some revenues, a thorough combing of all revenues was conducted as we were finalizing our budget recommendation for the new year, and so we got the current year aligned. Also, we had some real estate sale revenues that had not, never been budgeted for. While the transaction was approved by you, it hadn't officially been budgeted for, so that was cleaned up, and then some miscellaneous expenditure alignments occurred as well. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, we'll continue to update this fiscal year as we journey forward in the new one.
Great. Thank you, Carol. Any questions for Carol? Okay, the recommended action is that the board approve the Treasurer's Report as presented.
So moved.
Charles?
Second.
Jerry with the second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we can now vote. Our next Agenda Item is Board Policy 9.01, and you've all had a couple of weeks to go through the lengthy reports, which I know you have, and Dr. Youngman, I don't believe you've heard any feedback on adapting any of those.
No, a couple of questions, follow-up questions, but nothing that we could, I think, resolve and answer, so.
Okay.
Ask for any modifications.
Okay, all right, great. So the recommended action is that the board adopt all policies as presented. So moved. Jill? Second. Jerry with the second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we can now vote. Thank you. The next Agenda Item, new business, there are no new business items, so we will move to unfinished business, and as you recall, 11.01 through 11.06, we have heard those presentations at the study session, so there will be no presentations on those tonight, and you've had a chance to get any of your questions answered. So we will move through with those recommended action, starting with 11.01. The recommended action is that the board approves the 2020-2021 Professional Learning Plan as presented.
So moved.
Bruce with the first. Jerry with the second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we're ready to vote. Next Agenda Item 11.02. The recommended action is that the board approves the 6 through 12 English Language Arts, Instrumental Music, and Visual Arts MiGs as presented.
So moved.
Charles with the first.
Second.
Bruce with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Next Agenda Item 11.03. The recommended action is that the board approve a reduction to the professional development budget allocation from 1% to no less than one-half of 1%. So moved. So moved Jill.
Second.
Second, Sharita, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Next Agenda Item 11.04. The recommended action is that the board approves the bid from Paul Minter? Paul Minter? Did I say that correctly? Close enough. Purchasing power as presented. So moved. Okay, Sharita. Bruce with the second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we're ready to vote. Agenda Item 11.05. The recommended action is that the board approves fees and tuition rates for the 2020-2021 school year as presented. So moved. Jill? Charles? Any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Okay. Okay, it popped up again, so we can, if you want to vote again on your screen. Oh, there we go. Okay.
I think we just had an existential crisis.
Yes. Um, motion passes. Our next Agenda Item is 11.06. The recommended action is that the board approves the benefit renewal recommendations as presented. Jerry?
Second.
Denise with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Our next Agenda Item is 11.07, the 2020-2021 budget, and Carol will come to the podium.
Seems to be going very quickly, and there was so much work that went in behind the scenes to make that all happen.
It does not minimize the work.
Not at all. Absolutely not at all. Okay, so, um, let's see here. It's not going to load in the right places, is it? No, it's not. Okay, so I did, yes, I did provide you with the full budget recommendation during the June 9 study session, and so our practice is during this meeting, I provide it just a review. So I have some slides that are repetitive, what you saw last time, and some have been synthesized into just a few slides, and of course, this was posted for your preview prior to this evening's meeting. So I do have page numbers on the slides. That's the practice for this evening, you can easily note that. This slide reminds us of the budget development process and the number of months that it takes to journey through that, and that's why I referenced during the Treasurer's Report that about the time we wrap up with the prior fiscal year, we'll start the new budget for that next year in January. We'll talk this evening about the operating funds, and again, the primary changes for the upcoming fiscal year. We had shared with you previously that the estimated decrease for our state formula and classroom trust fund is $4 million. We didn't have that information in time for the Treasurer's Report, but we do know at this point in time, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, that our reduction in the current year is approaching, it's about $3.6 million plus a million dollars in Prop C funds. So combined, we are at that 4.5 million threshold, and we were anticipating that previously. We had messaged that before. So in planning for this upcoming year, we believe it is still prudent to anticipate a $4 million reduction. We will continue to monitor that as new information is provided to us by the state of Missouri, and we'll make recommendations for budget amendments moving forward as necessary. So that's a 5.6% withhold for the new fiscal year. And also on transportation formula, we know that that is anticipated to be just at $232.8000. That's a 12.24% withhold. And then we shared with you previously, we had the prior year formula correction, and that's a number that is never known. It's based on a statewide calculation. It's relative to the pot of money being distributed throughout all of the school districts, and it's based on attendance in those districts, as well as other factors. On the local front, we are showing an estimated increase of 864,302. That's dependent on 60 million in new construction, and also a slight increase in Proposition C. We did reduce our collection rate by 1% in the event that people are not able to pay their bills, their tax bills that will happen in the fall. We won't know this information, the assessed valuation information, until the August meeting, and that's the meeting at which you are asked to set the tax rate. So more of this will come into clarity as we progress through the year, but at this time, this is based on historical trend data. This is Proposition C, so we are estimating a decrease next year of 1,346, and again, it came in at slightly over a million dollars this year, a decrease, so that's not surprising. It's based on statewide sales tax, and we know that COVID-19 has impacted sales in retail businesses during this period of time. So we'll continue again to monitor this as we journey forward and provide you with adjustments. Merchants and manufacturers tax, we have applied some standard assumptions. We do not have a read on where these might go, so we are being realistic in our calculations and projections for next year. We've applied a 5% decrease in merchants and manufacturers, that takes it down by $491,097. And then on those other primary resources for local and county, where they are $400,000 or greater per type, we applied a 5% decrease, and that calculates to be just under $208,000. Our interest income, we've definitely seen a decrease in the rates that we're receiving on our investments and our overnight repo of our bank account balance, and so we've estimated a decrease of $544,799. That's a 30% decrease currently. So just a reminder that as we work to identify the expenditure recommendations for you, that we certainly align to the strategic plan. You receive each year two reports, mid-year and final, end-of-year report, for each of our focus areas, and as you know very well, at the May meeting, you approved our final addition at this time, Focus Area 5, so we're focused on the learner, supporting the learner and the teachers and other staffs in the district. We focus on financial sustainability and operational efficiency as we look through that lens to prioritize our expenditure recommendations, and communication and engagement are also part of that focus. This reminds you that the primary budget priorities of administration were identified through these top five criteria, and we, we started with Items 2 through 5, they were 1 through 4, and then when COVID occurred, we identified that maintaining our current staffing levels and continuing to employ our people was paramount, and so it was through that, that items were prioritized for moving forward. So maintaining current staff levels for instruction and student support, supporting our teachers, staff, and leaders through salary and benefits allocations, and then strategies and staffing for under-resourced and underrepresented students, instructional and/or support staff who impact the classroom, and then lastly, supports for current initiatives and programming. So to support the primary budget priorities, 1 and 2, on maintaining current staff levels and also providing an adequate and appropriate salary and benefit pay for these employees, we again are not planning for reductions. We're going to continue to focus on delivering for our students and supporting them in all of their needs beyond instruction. We have included within the budget recommendation, and that we would operate the schedules for all eligible staff, and that would cost approximately $3.66 million. That does include the gross pay plus the benefit taxation for retirement, social security, and Medicare that's required of an employer. Also, under maintaining appropriate levels for staff, we have that allocation for benefits. The second part of the increase from last year, because our increase is effective January 1 of 2021, we've included that allocation, as well as the new increase, where we also are now going to be providing additional plan options for employees, so that they may maintain their cost levels as they desire, dependent on which benefit option they desire. The allocation for that is 1,552,051, and again, that covers us for the fiscal year, July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. This slide shows you the supports for under-resourced and underrepresented students, and as a reminder, we had the third of three-phase implementation of early childhood expansion for kids that qualify for free and reduced lunch, and this will utilize Title Funds. So that's funded exclusively by Title I Resources, 872,140. We also are adding to the Equity and Diversity Program for Grow Your Own, and we had made a $75,000 allocation last year. That will continue this next year, and then this will be an additional increase of $25,000. We also did bring on Dr. Ivania to join our team as our Chief Equity and Diversity Officer, and made that contribution. For cross-categorical teaching, that is a program where we would eliminate the contracted service and instead hire our own teacher, who would be able to deliver not only the, serving the students that had previously been served, the level of students, but potentially doubling that effort. Under Primary Budget Priority 4, instructional and support staff who impact the classroom, we had recommended that we have a, an alternative program redesign. This impacts the PALS and AIMS programming. It also would provide for an allocation for behavioral programs at the middle and elementary levels. The second item listed there is the Academy of Fine and Performing Arts. That was presented to you previously, and that carries a price point of 251,960. The behavior program cost, net cost, is 64,164. Primary Budget Priority 5, which is supports for current initiatives and programming, this highlights for you those different items that were recommended, including the transportation, the permanent cost on transportation that would be as a result of closing Portland and now transporting those qualifying students to Delaware Sunshine and Holland Elementary Schools. Also, we have a temporary transportation allocation for transporting students from Williams to the temporary site at Old Sherwood. We had presented to you previously increased costs for insurance, for property and casualty workers' compensation, we're estimating an increase there. And then we presented also the background check increase, that's a statutory requirement, so that carries a $21,000 price point. Then we have some more temporary costs that are associated with moving and storing items relative to our bond construction, and that's 65,000. The last item there is a support position to assist in telecommunications, so that's about the phone replacement. We have phones throughout the district that repeatedly fail, and it's not providing the level of support that our people in our buildings need, so we know we are long overdue on phone replacement, and in order to implement that effectively, we need someone with boots on the ground helping deliver that. So this slide now highlights those operational neutral budget impact items. So they're either funded by a special resource, or they carry no additional cost for us. We know the launch program has been very successful, and we, Dr. Lemon provided you an extensive report on that recently, and we've identified for you that this course access for virtual instruction for students, we have included a $3.733 million revenue increase, a 4.59 expenditure increase, and through that, we're still returning $2.291 million to SPS for our own needs here. The CARES Fund, Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, we believe that in this upcoming year, we would utilize $3.3 million for that purpose. We would have expenditures of $2.3 million for special expenditures relative to supporting students, and then there would be $1 million utilized to backfill some of our lost revenue that we have awareness for at this point in time. We do have access to $6.8 million, and we will determine how we need to use that moving forward, understanding at this time that that is all there will be, and we don't know the length of time we'll be impacted by the economic downturn. The federal program again, highlighting for you that $872,140 of revenue will support the expansion of early childhood programming for those little ones. Also, we will see an additional revenue increase supporting general title expenditures. So as staffs in that program receive a step increase, they would, that would carry a cost against the Title I fund, so just general capitalizing on some of the carryover funds available to us. So just general capitalizing on some of the carryover funds available to us. We've currently estimated turnover savings and excess salary benefits at $1.250 million, and we have accounted for that within the budget. That concludes the operational piece. If there are any questions about that, I'd be happy to go back over that. I know you've had a lot of discussion and opportunity to engage with me on a variety of these things. I'll move forward. The Debt Service Fund, this simply restates for you that we anticipate that we'll have a beginning fund balance on July 1 of just over $91 million. Our revenue and expenditures nearly offset one another, and that's by design. And we do have $70 million in escrow funds for a previous crossover refunding. The ending fund balance at the conclusion of the upcoming fiscal year would be estimated at 92 million, just over 92 million. The Capital Projects Fund, we're showing for you not only our regular capital projects, but also that commitment that we made regarding investing in the bond project as we worked through all of those details that the Community Task Force navigated and part of their recommendation. And we are beginning our year, July 1, with $20,467,000. We have slight revenues, and those are unique revenues that can be directly received there. It can be interest income. It can be sales of real estate, that type of thing. We have 1.4 million there, and then the expenditures estimated are 12,346. And that supports a variety of needs throughout the district, whether it be roofing or parking lots, or purchasing school buses for kids, or equipment that the Nutrition Services team uses. A variety of costs are associated in that category. We have a proposed transfer next year of $6 million, and then that ends our balance at $15.541 million for Capital Projects Fund. For bond funds, as you know, that sale occurred following the April 2, 2019 passage of the $168 million bond issue. We sold $148 million worth of bonds, and then that money was received into the bank account. So now we are in the process of spending those funds to support the construction needs. And so what you'll see each year is that balance will continue to dwindle, as it should. So we're estimating we'll begin the year at just over $128 million. And again, our beginning balance is our ending balance June 30, and it's absolutely contingent on what bills show up these last days in June. So that's why it's an estimate. We have proposed revenue of 2.496 million, and that is primarily interest income. Then the expenditures that are proposed for this upcoming year, based on the drawdown schedule, is $96.9 million. And that would result then in an ending fund balance of $33,666,276. It shows you a summary again of the Health Benefit Trust Fund. It's a fiduciary fund, so these dollars are relative to the contribution that not only SPS makes on behalf of our employees, but also that which people have deducted from their paychecks for dependent coverage. And all of that money goes into this special bank account, and then our third-party provider, MedPay, makes draws on that to pay the medical bills for people. And we are anticipating an ending balance of just over 8.5 million at this point in time. We show estimated revenue and expenditures there. We are showing an increase in revenue, and that's relative to the additional increase that has been approved for our health benefits. That would result in an ending balance of $10,087,000. And keep in mind that it's at June 30 that we see the greatest spike in our fund balance for Health Benefit Trust, because all of those balance of contract checks have deposited into this fund, and we haven't seen the increased expenditures yet that typically occur over the summertime. It will be interesting to see how that plays out this year, given our pandemic experience, and we'll know more as we journey forward. Greater Ozark Center for Advanced Professional Studies, we're showing you that we're estimating the balance at this time to be $117,813. We did note that we will experience a decline in the fund balance. We did have a couple of districts drop out because of COVID-19, and so they're choosing a different method of delivery of instruction for those students, and we'll continue to monitor this as we progress forward. And the simple fix to that is that the tuition gets adjusted. We're not recommending a tuition increase at this time. So the resulting ending balance, June 30, 2021, is estimated currently at nearly $30,000. We don't expect you to be able to read this. It's tiny print, but it reminds you that this document is embedded within our budget document that is posted for your prior review, and it lists for you all the very same changes to revenues and expenditures that I highlighted both June 9 and partially highlighted for you this evening. If you want to go back and look at that, it lists it by fund and helps you understand the dynamic changes that occur. This is our general budget summary, and we're highlighting for you that operational revenues do exceed expenditures. When we couple that with a capital transfer, there is a decline in the operational fund balance of up to 2%. But that's why we carry a fund balance to weather challenges such as this. So we're showing for you that we would end with a 16.19% fund balance, June 30, 2021. So that is a little bit of a drop for us. This next slide shows you our operating balance trend. So you can see at this point in time, when this was developed just within, well, I guess it was last Thursday and Friday, we were showing an estimated 18.23% ending fund balance in the current year. Again, that will change, dependent on the revenues and expenditures that actually post to our bank account, and then we do see that decline. We've maintained a very steady balance. If you're curious, if we drop below a 12% fund balance, that could cause us to be in a situation where we need to borrow money to meet payroll in the fall, because we received significant revenues in January from our local resources. So that's a good thing to keep in mind as we look at this, and it does help us align. Our fund balance still aligns with our Board of Education Policy, DIAA, requiring a minimum of 15%. So that's in order there. This last slide helps us get our heads around the fact that while it may sound like a lot of money when we say we have $50 million in the bank, when you look at our total operating costs and basing that simply on a 260-day operation, meaning we're only spending money Monday through Friday, that means we have 43.15 days to run on. And for context, this number last year was 46.21. So again, it's understandable, given the decline in our fund balance percentage. And that concludes the presentation. The full document that complies with our requirements of Missouri statute and board policy is posted for review on Board Docs.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. You've been very thorough.
And we recognize that even though you did that fast, you took a lot more time getting it ready.
Yes, and there's a great team that does all the work, so that's important.
So at this time, are there any questions for Carol over what she's presented to us with the budget that you haven't had a chance to get a question answered?
Just wanted to, I don't know that it speaks specifically to this budget year. In fact, it almost certainly won't. I mean, this is an election year. What are you hearing about potentially CARES Act 2.0, 3.0, anything? We can't count on it. We certainly don't want to spend it until we have it, and maybe not even then. But are we hearing anything along those lines?
Nothing of any official nature.
Concrete. There's a lot of discussions of stimulus for, right? Because CARES was original, and then there's been a couple of small, little added packages. I'd say there's a decent chance that something comes out. There was a House bill passed that didn't get taken up by the Senate, wasn't going anywhere in the Senate. I think what we've heard will take this conversation up in July. So as we get into this new fiscal year, we hear that there will be continued pressure from government entities, states and local communities, businesses, that there are still gaps to fill. So I think there's a chance. I don't think it's the House package that was really pretty large, but I think there's a chance from history, if you go back to era funds during the last recession that was caused by the housing bubble basically busting, there were significant era funds, and a lot of those were backfilled dollars, right? What we've gotten so far really aren't backfilled dollars. They are crisis intervention for businesses and paycheck protection and unemployment, and then a few things to pay for expenses related to COVID. But what's passed right now hasn't been backfilled. So that's the conversation. Will they go there again like they did in era? I don't have the crystal ball to say yes or no, but I know it will be a continued conversation.
It is really quite remarkable how much this budget has changed from the time we first gathered to talk about this and then today is.
And a remarkable journey, I'm sure, on so many fronts.
Good question, Charles. Thank you. Any other questions before I read the recommended action? Okay. The Agenda Item 11.07, the recommended action, is that the Board approves the 2020-2021 budget as presented. Okay, Denise?
Second.
Jill with a second. Any discussion before we vote? Okay, seeing none, we can vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Carol. You're up next with Agenda Item 11.08, Compensation Plans.
Thank you. So Mrs. Rector provided you with the collected bargaining agreement information, and I should highlight first and foremost that this salary schedule for the upcoming fiscal year does embed within that any of that conversation, which those changes were quite minimal, as you know. We posted for your review a changes document, and most of it highlights some changes to launch and positions within launch that have specific funding. There is a grant-funded position that has been added to the salary schedule for Farm to Table. It's a grant that our Health Services Director was able to secure with a team of other individuals. And then some of the changes include a title change or two listed within there, the side letters that Mrs. Rector referenced with regard to explore and launch instruction, the 2% increase. And then we have a few deletions that are no longer needed for the upcoming year. I want to highlight for you also, so it was a year ago that our compensation study information was provided to you, and it carried with it a number of recommendations, and all of those came to fruition, with the exception of a couple. One was that we would take a look at how we are identifying our parents' teachers' positions, and that hasn't occurred. It's still on the list of things to do. The other one, though, is a review of our stipends, and I want you to know that that work is still underway. I would tell you that it was a bit delayed by COVID-19. But Dr. Pilli, Allison Pilli, and Mr. Josh Scott, so our curriculum and our athletics partners, have continued their diligently in terms of reviewing all of those various stipends, and we actually have a meeting scheduled for the first week in July to continue that work. We knew when we started the process that there would not be a recommendation ready for this coming year, and then the pandemic ensured that, but we will be continuing that work. And then when we reach a certain point, we will collaborate with our bargaining units that are impacted by any of the recommended changes to that placement schedule. So the idea behind it, though, was that we would implement some form of calculation process so that we could ensure appropriate placement has been made on the salary schedule. So more to come on that. Otherwise, we've provided for you the 2020-2021 salary schedules. Again, we tidied up a number of schedules last year when you approved the current year schedule, and that continues as we move forward.
Thank you for that update, Carol. Any questions for Carol on those salary schedules? Okay, hearing none, I'll move forward with the recommended action. It is that the Board approves the 2020-2021 salary schedule as presented.
I'll move.
Charles?
Second.
Bruce with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is Agenda Item 12.01, under Bond Project Updates, Change Orders and Agreements. Travis?
Good evening.
Welcome. Good evening.
Thank you. Just a few change orders and agreements for you this evening. If you'll take a look, there's a few for Package Number Four. There is a credit, and then that actually is a deduct for that package. Hillcrest has a little bit of design work that needed to be added for Anderson Engineering due to some of the work going on out there. We did discover some additional asbestos at Williams, and we were doing the abatement, preparing for the demolition to start on July 1, and so that's the additional cost from Gurken for that, a small amount of painting for Crossland at Delaware. And then as we continue to finish up the renovation part of the interior of the existing building at Sunshine, we continue to run into things that were unforeseen and surprises, which we know happens in a building of that age. And so you'll see the change orders there for Sunshine. So any questions that I can answer for you, I'd be happy to.
Any questions for Travis before we move forward with the recommended action? Okay, thank you, Travis. Hearing none, I'll read the recommended action is that the Board approves the change orders and agreements as presented. Charles?
Second.
Bruce with a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we are ready to vote. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is Public Comments to Address Non-Agenda Items. We have no speakers. Thank you, Kathy, so we will move forward with Report from Administration.
I'll provide on behalf of the team. If you have any questions, feel free to follow up with myself or anyone. But we'll start with Explore is continuing to function, and our teachers engaging with our students through virtual modes. It wraps up June 30 for Session 1 with just over 7,000 SPS students participating. And in addition to that, and I'll forget that we're serving a lot of districts across the state, we have 17,000 non-SPS launch students participating. So hundreds of hundreds, over 1,000 teachers participating and supporting our kids and kids from across the state. July Explore enrollment is at 5,500 for SPS, and it starts July 6. As you know, that will be our first chance to go back to a seated environment with some restrictions and some learning opportunities. We have 2,500 students that have signed up for that experience, and we're communicating to them regarding the sites that we'll be using specifically for that. And then we have an additional 10,000 statewide participants in launch, as are projected for July at this point. Procedures proceeded and transportation are in their final stage, and all of the preparation are being made and staffing being done in order to ensure that July kicks off successfully just after the 4th. Summer grab-and-go meals continue at sites across the community. Kids can stop in three days a week for meals for all seven days, and we're seeing continued success there. Extracurricular programming is also happening throughout the summer, so that's another opportunity for some of our kids to reengage with our teachers and coaches and leaders. Workouts for conditioning and specific sport instruction are taking place. There are some limitations regarding participation and spectators and travel. We're trying to keep that very close to the region, or close to Springfield at this point. Some other things that have taken place in the Equity and Diversity in Focus Area 5, we'll be welcoming our Coordinator of Workforce Development to our Equity and Diversity Team next week, starts July 1. So we're looking forward to that addition to our team and working with our Focus Area 5 implementation. And we took the opportunity to celebrate Black History Summer Academy, which we'd normally do face-to-face, but we didn't have that opportunity, so we did that virtually. And Avon's team helped lead promotion of that and community engagement. So those things have happened in the Equity and Diversity front on fall planning, because we've truly shifted completely away from summer to making sure we're ready for an August 24 start. We have four work groups that are underway, Health, Safety, and Operations, Learning, Development, and Supports, Communication and Partnerships, and Equity and Access, made up of leaders, health professionals, teachers that are meeting at this point, building up recommendations, and they'll be meeting weekly, as well as some subcommittees that they have spinoff doing as appropriate. They're looking at research that we're getting from others that are helping inform. We know, just like you've seen on a regular basis, there's lots of webinars, lots of Waze. There are no crystal balls or silver bullets. There are going to be a lot of different plans on how to go back to school, but it's really important that we have our community's voice and that workforce, or that those work groups are an important part of that. But also, we pushed out a survey to our parents and our teachers regarding their thoughts of what they want to see in reentry, some interesting tidbits. It's not completely closed, but we've had 7,000 total parent responses already. When we ask, 93% would send kids back if we opened with seated at this point. So they're saying we want seated, and we will send our kids. send our kids back. We want the right precautions to take place. Some of them have very few concerns, some of them have more concerns, and we allow them to give us feedback on what the highest level of concern would be, or the things that they would want to see most. That being said, if they were given an option, because we've talked about really truly providing options, because we know that some of our students will come with health conditions that might prevent them from being in our schools, or maybe a family member that may have that exact same scenario. 85% of those responding prefer a seated option, and 15% prefer a virtual option at this point. So, we do have different needs at the table, and that's what we wanted to learn from the survey, and we'll continue to get that feedback throughout the community. And that will help the work groups design responses so that we keep kids engaged and serve our learners appropriately.
John, of those who, the significant majority prefer the seated option, what safety precautions are sort of floating to the top?
Yeah, if we looked at that rank and sort, the, you know, CDC guidelines, some social distancing components, definitely screening both staff and students for temperatures and the traditional, what most people are, have you had a cough, you travel, those kind of things have floated to the top. Floating to the bottom of the ranking is universal masking and those kind of things still on there, and I think everybody knows it's important. But it was really a ranking, so it wasn't rate the significance of each one of these as if you, if you had a preference, what are the things you want us to focus on primarily? So, that's the, and that's a history review that I did just on the survey results today, so.
Sure.
Got a little ways to go.
About teachers?
Yeah, so the second survey is teachers. So, we've got 1,100 teachers have completed the survey. 99% said that they plan to return if we open with seated, and we have appropriate precautions. So, they want to be back in, they want to be in seated, but they want the appropriate precautions. And when we asked them kind of the same rankings, they almost turned out identical to parents, right? Start with those CDC guidelines, move into screenings, and then move kind of down the list. It's very consistent with what we heard from our parents. The other thing that we asked them, because we knew, or we thought that there would be likelihood that maybe some kids would need to go into a virtual environment, so would you be able to flip your mode of operation of instruction if necessary, either full virtual or throughout the year as possible? And 95% said willing to teach virtually as needed for the support of our students. And obviously, that's what the appropriate support and training.
Just want to highlight that for a minute.
Tells us that they're ready to do whatever it takes, and they're here for our kids, but they want the right precautions and things for safety.
That's really neat.
It was really good feedback for us to start putting in the hands of our work groups, and it's local, right? So, it tells us what our community feels like, our teachers, our parents, as we try to design for reopening. So, that will continue. We're not done collecting information, and those work groups will continue to work. Our goal is for communication to go out to parents in the community mid-July. We know that the virus is going to continue to change and how it's going to grow, and hotspots. We see all kinds of things taking place right now. We don't want to get overly quick on the solutions and the opening strategy. We want to take our time, get a lot of feedback, and then, but give everybody enough time to prepare, because we're going to have to train, we're going to have to do curricular development potentially, we're going to maybe have to have students re-enroll and take different choices, because they may not be able to come to us because of some medically fragile conditions. So, those things we have to have enough time to account for, so.
What's your estimated timeline?
Yeah, so our goal is mid-July, so is when we would have recommendations from those work groups, and then we would kind of finalize our document to push out to the public in the last week of July. So, that gives us early a month. If you think of schools starting August 24, gives us a month for prep and enrollment, for parents to adjust as necessary, and for us to staff as necessary if we have to flip some teaching assignments and those things. So, that's where we're working towards.
You really are kind of damned if you do and damned if you don't, in terms of when you think the answer is. It can be too early, but you've got to be early enough.
Yeah, there's no perfect timeline for this, right? So, we're trying to take enough time, you say it often, right? Enough time is necessary, but no more time that's necessary. Because if you make the decision too early, then, you know, scenarios change, or weeks down the road that we didn't have those answers, and then you got to rebuild again. So, so we're trying to take the appropriate amount of time, but also make sure that we communicate in enough time for families and staff to be ready for that 24th. We'll keep communicating as we proceed, so. But this feedback's being very beneficial. That's the instructional fall planning. The other things that are going on are around kind of events and things that are taking place, graduation. A work team is finaling all those procedures, and we expect to communicate in the next 10 days to our graduates regarding what that's going to look like. So, everything's still on for August 6 and 7. The times haven't been announced yet, because they're probably going to have to adjust a little bit, probably not going to be as tight as they typically were, because we need time to have people get in and out a little bit more than they did before. The sizes of the clouds, crowds is probably going to be restricted a little bit, and not just everybody can come. And then there's some other precautions. But we're working directly with Missouri State, who hosts all of ours, as well as a number of other regional graduations, so we can have consistent approach across the region for anything that's hosted in the arena. So, that information will be going out soon. Few other things, volunteers supporting five SPS schools on United Ways Day of Caring. That didn't get to be the same kind of day of caring as we're used to in this community with thousands of volunteers going out, but they still did some projects. So, there were volunteers that showed up at Bingham, Cowdon, Watkins, and Parkview, and there'll be additional volunteers at Weaver coming up in August. In addition to partnerships that support us, our Ready Set Supply has kicked off, where we work with a number of community partners, and support is being sought. So, pay attention to your social media, or if you have groups that have advocated and supported, make sure you're reaching out to our communications office. You can visit sbs.org for more info on Ready Set Supply, on how to give and what to give, so that we make sure that our kids have what they need when they reenter our schools. And first, SPS Virtual Job Fair was today for recruiting bus drivers, because they're going to be an integral part of our reopening, and we are always in search for great bus drivers. So, tell your friends. It's always a thankless and difficult job. It's going to be even tougher if you, as you can imagine, as we try to navigate a virus and students with some kind of screening processes, and that's what we're putting in place, and some masking processes on our buses. So, we will look forward to recruiting some great drivers. That's the admin reports legislative. It's very brief. Some of the things that are going on, we're obviously preparing for a primary election in August, so candidates are out in the field, and we'll, I've had the opportunity to engage with a few regarding their issues on education, shared with them your platform from last year, so that they know what SPS typically does, and how we engage and what we look for. And then the final election obviously comes out in November. The governor, we're waiting on him on the signing of bills, things that have passed, as well as any vetoes that might take place, as well as withhold announcements. As we've discussed before, we expect those to happen early in July, but that's yet to be seen exactly what that number's going to be, and it will probably have a lot to do with how revenue comes in between now and July 15, when that tax date, actually, that April 15 is the July 15 now, that becomes a new marker for us of what kind of revenue came in from last year's taxes in the new year. So, we'll stay tuned and keep you informed with what we know. We're also continuing to stay engaged on the CARES Act funds regarding the, you know, guidance that came back from the Secretary of Education regarding how those should be allocated and pushed out to private versus public schools. Continue to give feedback and communicate with DESI regarding our hope and expectation that they follow the law and not the guidance, because they do not agree at this point. So, it does make a big financial difference. For us, it's about a $500,000 difference between what SPS would have access to in CARES funds if they followed the guidance and not the law. Let's see what kind of, we haven't heard the results. That's reports?
Great. Any specific questions for John on admin or legislative update?
I will, on the Minnesota State website, the election guide, if you want to get that, when you interact with candidates, go with the questions, not publicly yet, but provision. So, if you're going to interact with the candidates or others, look at what to ask them, right, and sit at that one.
Great.
Thank you. Any other questions for John? Okay, we'll move forward. Thank you. Thank you, John. Our next agenda item is 15.01, Board Comments. Are there any board comments? I have just a couple.
I'd like to just say a word about Gloria Morris, who passed away this last week. She, I worked with her. I was a counselor. She was a counselor in the system, one of the few, I think, who spent their whole career at one building. That doesn't usually happen. She was just one of the most genuine people I've ever worked with. She was Gloria wherever she was, whether it was at Pitkin or Central Extracurricular. We sat in counseling meetings. She was not a fan of meetings at all, and she was genuine about that, too, so you knew that ahead of time. She would have rather been back working with students. And I think to have that direct impact on thousands of lives, thousands. I was a counselor at Central when she was at Pitkin, and you could call, I called her, you couldn't, I called her and said, Gloria, I need help with fill in the blank. And she didn't have, it was, she knew about who you were talking about every time. And so, she had her groups there, and then all of these other students that she had worked with, and she just knew about them. She was unique. She just was a unique person. So, I'd just like to recognize her service to students, but to the community of Springfield. She'll be missed.
Yes. That was very nice, and it was a nice tribute to her and Kate Burton. Yes, yes, I read that article. Thank you for bringing that up, Bruce. When I think of her, I didn't get a chance to work with her, but she was joy. Every time you, every time you saw her, her energy was joy, so.
It was. She hugged you, and you knew it was genuine. I mean, she wanted to do that, so you couldn't escape. If you didn't, that's your problem, not hers. So, she was just, I'd say, just so genuine, and it was right there. So, it was, she was a great person.
Yes. Thank you. Any other board comments?
Do you want us to talk about a conference we attended?
Yeah, yeah.
I have a few notes you want.
I'll just state it publicly while you're pulling up your notes. The MS, as you all may recall, the MSBA online virtual conference happened on Friday, and Charles, Gary, Denise, and I were able to attend that in honor of SPS, and also as the voting delegates, we were able to vote during the delegate session. And Denise has a couple remarks.
Yeah, I don't know, whoever else might, I found it extremely interesting. They had great, at first I had some national speakers that were very, very good. I found it interesting. I think one of, I think we tried to kind of split up and go to some of the different sessions, and one that I attended was the instruction and supporting teachers. It was really interesting to hear from the State Teachers of the Year on what they're trying to do in their districts in light of virtual instruction, what they're trying to do to stay in touch with their students and their concerns with staying in touch with their students. And I know an earlier session that I listened to had to do with reporting abuse and the questions of mandated reporting with not.
Why are you looking at me?
Yeah, with not seeing their students every day, face-to-face, and how to be able to recognize and how to report whenever you're not with your students. And the angst of that, and how many of them were really, really concerned about that. They wanted to get back in the classroom. They wanted to do what their students especially does. They needed their, their monitoring and their, they wanted their presence with them. But that was, that was great. And then the teachers talking about what they were trying to do for their students, even though they were not in their classroom. But I, it was, I found it to be, again, heartbreaking, and not so much for us, because we are ahead of the game, but in some of the smaller districts and some of the other districts, where they are still trying to figure out how to make sure all their students have a device, and also how to, grappling with this, how to make sure their students have access to the online. And I loved it, because one of the speakers who, I think she, is it the National Commission? This is the National Commissioner, you can take, Jerry?
FCC.
Yeah. She used the term, either she or Natoli Turner with the Brookings Institute, used the term, it's no longer no child left behind, it's no child left offline. I thought that was very clever, and just where we are today, because I'm from back, when I was working on Title I, the No Child Left Behind, we were grappling with that. But now they're trying to figure out many districts, how to make sure students can get online. And all, they're just brainstorming things from at least having a parking lot where parents can drive and bring their children, where they can get onto the internet, sitting in their cars, have access at a public place. I'm thinking how great it is that kids in Springfield have a device and have the hotspots, or, you know, they have the devices.
That we send home with them, yeah.
Yeah, to allow them to be online, and how much work has gone into that, and that we're doing that. But still, there's just so many unknowns, and they're working hard in their districts to do that, so. And then, again, once, once again, the biggest focus is the physical and the mental health of students. And if you can't provide that for them, then there's so many concerns as how they're learning. So, I mean, I thought it was a great, great conference. It's pretty fun to be able to do a conference in whatever professional garb you choose to wear, and wherever you choose to sit, at your home, inside, outside, wherever. But I think I, I actually think I'd listen better. I was more focused that way than having a lot of people around me to distract me. But I've been very worthwhile. I'm glad that I, I'm glad I did that. So, I don't know, Charles and Gary, you, they have more to say?
I would agree. I thought it was, the delegate assembly as well as the sessions themselves, I thought were really very well done. A few technical glitches, but that's to be expected, honestly, as somebody who had to teach for half a semester online. Frankly, I would have settled for that number of, on any given day, frankly. A couple of things. In the delegate assembly, one of the items which was approved was a change in mission of the, of MSBA, moved it away from, in some ways, it moved it away from the boards themselves being the end in themselves, to boards being, being an end to ensuring that every student succeeds. And I think that's the appropriate relationship, and we, we enjoy each other, we do really important work, but we're not an end in ourselves, right? We are here for some other reason, and that is to ensure that every child has every opportunity to succeed. So, it's a small rhetorical shift, but I think a significant philosophical one, so I was pleased to see that. I think the other issue, and like Denise, I came away feeling that Springfield Public Schools has significant advantages in some ways, right? We have the technological infrastructure, we have some expertise in online pedagogy that a lot of our smaller districts did not. And there was also a very interesting session on equity and diversity and inclusion, and I think we've made some significant steps beyond some of our public districts. What I came away with was that the expectation, and this is just being congenitally dissatisfied, because we have taken some steps, that was the cover charge. Now, the action has to follow, right? And so, I think, as they say, what is the hashtag, hashtag do the work, now the work begins. I think we've just gotten into that game, and I think we have some challenging conversations ahead, but I look forward to them as we see where they develop.
Thank you, Charles. Any other comments before we move forward? I know Sharita, just to fill in the other board members', is starting her MSBA board training online this summer, so that work begins for her in that avenue. So, just letting the other board members know about that.
I'm not going to.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for noting that. Thank you, Charles, for serving and representing us. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Our upcoming meetings. Okay, moving on, our upcoming meetings. The school system is closed July 3rd for the Independence Day holiday. As you all have probably noted on your calendar, we have a July combined meeting for July 14th. The Learn, Lead, Succeed Leadership Kickoff is scheduled for August 4th at 8:00 a.m. at Kikapoo High School. If you have any interest in attending, if you will let Kathy know, so she can record and make anyone aware if you want to attend that. And the high.
What was the date again?
That is August 4th at 8:00 a.m. at Kikapoo. And then, the high school commit, graduation ceremonies are August 6th and 7th. And we will be getting more scheduled times as we move forward on those items. Excuse me, I hate to ask you to say it again, but what was the thing on August 4th? That is the Learn, Lead, Succeed Leadership Kickoff. Want to explain what that is?
Yeah, it's just our first day back with leadership team, all leadership team members. And normally, the board president says a few remarks, and we do multiple different training sessions, and we'll have all of us there at Kikapoo.
So, it's something for Elena to.
She'll speak, if she's alone, then we'll recognize any board members that want to come in and greet leadership team as they return, and then teachers return the following.
August 4th, 8:00 a.m.
With all of our new teachers also coming right after that.
Right, right. And then graduations, August 6th and 7th. Okay, moving on, our next agenda item is any plus deltas. If you have any comments on this meeting, you can write it on one of the post-it notes and hand that to Kathy before you leave tonight. Yes?
I'm back up on it. So, on August the, August 6th, is that Good Morning Springfield, did you say that?
It is, yes.
It is.
Oh, you did already say it.
No, we didn't mention that.
So, if that's not on your calendar, make sure it is, and I think it's.
I think Kathy sent that to us. Oh, and now that's at Carver's, is that at Carver?
I think we're Kikapoo, are we? Yeah.
We're in the auditorium. It says Carver.
No, no, it's Kikapoo, so we'll get the location, I guess.
Did I decline this one and you start anew, or should I try to edit?
You can just change the location. That'll be the first return to live Good Morning Springfield, because they've done all virtual, so they're asking us to host the first one back, so. We'll have some social distancing and probably use the auditorium and limit capacity in there, but we'd love to have you here available.
So, Kathy will make the change on the location for us, on our, on the calendar. Thank you for asking about that, Denise. Okay, so plus deltas, hand those to Kathy on your way out. Our next agenda item is, the recommended action is that the board meets an executive session to discuss personnel and audit matters as provided in Sections 610.021, Subsections 3, 13, and 17 of the revised Missouri statutes. Do I, I will entertain one to affirm that.
Okay.
Charles with the first, Jill with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we are ready to vote. I'll say that. Objection. It wasn't funny. Thank.